Called the meeting in order the Wilmington City Council like to welcome all those who are with us there this evening and all those who are watching us at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government at this time. Like to introduce Joe Michael James of Wilmington Fire Department. Come forward and give our invocation if everyone stand and remain standing afterwards for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads of reverence. How many father has that you be with us today as we continue the journey of better and not better community? Remind us that the decisions we make today not only affect us, but the next generation of leaders and residents. Let us show respect and love towards each other as we share our opinions and ideas. Give us ears to listen, whereas to the honest and a heart for the community we treasure. As bees work in harmony for their colony, let us too as Wilmingtonans persevere in unity. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have several presentations this evening. We have three in fact. And the first one, I'm going to recognize the leadership Wilmington class of 2025. I don't have an individual to recognize, so I'm going to recognize the entire class. So if the entire class can come to the front, I'd appreciate it. City council members, why don't we join them? These folks have spent the last six months learning about our community. Feel like I'm at the, at a tabernacle. First, before, before we start, I just want to say to each and every one of you, and I've said this earlier today. Thank you all for participating and being part of this class. This is extremely important to our community. I don't know if people understand this or know this, but every year the Chamber of Commerce puts this group together and puts a class together of citizens that want to learn more about their community. Want to learn about the state, federal, our film industry, our innovation groups, how our community works, our infrastructure. So these folks take the time out of their day and they're away from their families to really get to understand and know about our community. And I just want to say thank you for taking an active interest in your community and your government because it's extremely important. The better informed citizens makes a better country and a better community. And we just say thank you on behalf of the city of Wilmington for doing this. Appreciate it, guys. Now we'll read the recognition. Whereas the objective of Leadership Wilmington is to educate, challenge and motivate citizens and to develop future leaders to work for the betterment of our community. And whereas the program consists of 10 sessions to promote leadership skills, community issues and challenges. Regional, social and economic change, diversity, equity and inclusion. And whereas the members of the Leadership Wilmington work together and individually to plan and execute a day of service for schools and nonprofits work on Wilmington. And whereas Leadership Wilmington is committed to providing a continuous diverse supply of creative leaders to the community by developing their knowledge of the region and providing them the opportunity for meaningful action. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wilmington City Council does recognize the Leadership Wilmington class of 2025 and the Greater Wilmington Chamber of Commerce Education Foundation for their commitment and dedication for contributing to quality of life of Wilmington and surrounding areas. Please give these folks a big round of applause. Thank you. They've learned so much. They're very shy. Nobody wants to say a thing. So we're going to take a picture here. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone. Now you have to stay for the entire meeting. Thank you, everybody. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Christina Haley, the President and CEO of Wilmington Downtown Incorporated, who will be making the presentation of the MSD Annual Report. Christina, welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of Council. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you here today to present our fiscal year 2024 MSD Annual Report. This is for our five-year municipal services district contract with the city of Wilmington. Fiscal year 2024 brought significant opportunities to enhance downtown's vibrancy and welcoming environment for businesses, residents and visitors. This report highlights key initiatives, including our MSD Ambassador Operations, Special Projects, the facade improvement grant program and our Holiday Lights Pilot Initiative, all of which I'll detail for you today. With approval from our MSD Advisory Committee, WDI executed strategic goals that align with our district's mission. Our work was supported by more than $584,000 in program funding, the majority of which allocate, was allocated towards our ambassadors program. Fiscal year 2024 marked the third year of our five-year contract with our, with the city of Wilmington to provide municipal district services. Our mission remains steadfast to enhance downtown as a premier destination to invest, live and explore. Over the years, MSD tax revenue generated largely from downtown property values has steadily increased. In tax, in the tax year 2023, we achieved a record in MSD revenue through the special use tax of 0.647 cents per $100 property valuation. While tax year 2024 saw a slight decline of 5%, WDI continues to drive economic development in partnership with the city of Wilmington to strengthen our future tax base. Here I've outlined the structure of WDI, the MSD and our relationship with our 37-member Board of Directors, which provides guidance to ensure the success of our MSD programming. WDI reports monthly to the MSD Advisory Committee and annually to this council. Our municipal district services are through a contract with Block by Block, a nationally recognized district services provider. We continue to refine and enhance our contract to meet the ever-evolving needs of Wilmington's MSD through a broad range of services. This is our current team for the fiscal year 2025. These dedicated individuals serve as the custodians of our district and are reliable points of contacts for our downtown community. Our MSD ambassadors play a vital role in maintaining a clean and welcoming downtown environment through services such as pressure washing, graffiti removal and litter cleanup. Key cleaning statistics in fiscal year 24 included 124 biohazard removals, 231 instances of graffiti removed, 646 handbills or signs removed from our district and 555 bags of trash collected from the district. This map here shows the highlights and locations where we had our ambassadors conducting graffiti and handbill removals across the district. These are our, just showcasing our services. The following images also showcase our services before and after of a graffiti removal. This is another graffiti removal on the Riverwalk. This is a sign removal from Second and Market Streets. This is a needle biohazard removal found on Chestnut Street. A trash removal. Another instance of trash removal. This is an encampment cleanup and another encampment cleanup behind River Place. MSD ambassadors regularly perform pressure washing in key areas of the district as well. In fiscal year 24, they completed major projects, including the Wilmington Convention Center right-of-way and the North Fourth Street Bridge. These initiatives enhance their appearance. In total, our team pressure washed more than 68,000 linear feet of right-of-way in our municipal services district. This map illustrates where pressure washing took place in the district. And here again, there's some before and after photographs of our ambassadors pressure washing. This is the image that shows the Fourth Street Bridge pressure washing. Special projects. Beautification is essential to our mission for the MSD as well. We undertake special projects such as landscaping improvements to enhance our district's appeal. This slide shows one example. In partnership with the city of Wilmington, WDI directed ambassadors to refresh planting beds along North Front Street. This was prior to the peak of summer season last year. In fiscal year 24, our ambassadors dedicated over 900 hours to special projects like this. Here are additional images from a special project that we, where we addressed tree wells and overgrowth along North Fourth Street. These are all examples of our ambassadors work across the district. As you can see, basic services such as trash removal, pressure washing and strategic special projects result in a huge impact in the vibrancy of our district. MSD ambassadors also provide business and hospitality contacts to enhance downtown's atmosphere. We track business changes and guide residents and visitors to local establishments. These hospitality and budget, business engagements, these measures provided 8,100 business contacts, 46,500 hospitality contacts, 609 hospitality escorts throughout the district and 633 motorist assists in the district. In these slides, the maps show where ambassadors provided their hospitality services. As you can see, they're all over the place. And here are a couple of images of Ambassador Rob engaging with some downtown tourists. Our ambassadors also collaborate closely with the Wilmington Police Department. They serve as extra eyes and ears on our streets and report quality of life concerns such as streetlight outages. We reported 285 in fiscal year 24 and skateboarding violations. We address 177 skateboard violations in the district. Moving on to our street outreach program. In addition to the MSD Ambassador Services, WDI employs one street outreach coordinator to assist the unhoused population. Pictured here is Jack Morris, our trained social worker who operates under Block by Block's outreach training program. Fiscal year 24, he, Jack, conducted 480, 4,895 instances of outreach efforts within the Municipal Services District, making a significant impacts on the lives of individuals experiencing homelessness within our community and addressing their complex needs. In fiscal year 24, Jack conducted many different types of services to downtown's unhoused population, including handling more than 1,200 social services referrals, assisting 22 individuals in securing shelter, helping 54 individuals obtain housing assistance and supporting 26 people entering detox or rehab. Jack's work is critical in providing pathways to stability for those in need. And here are some points and location throughout the MSD where Jack conducts his work. As you can see, Jack conducts some of his work outside of the MSD. This is to address needs that are met close to or going to the daytime shelter within the Central Business District. He also helps transport unhoused individuals to where they can find North Carolina Identification. He transports them to shelter, to the hospital if needed and always returning back within the district for his services. All right, moving on from the Municipal District Services Ambassador's Program. We focus, we've also focused on improving the storefronts in our downtown community. WDI's facade improvement grant program supports businesses and property owners by offering reimbursement-based grants for all of our storefront enhancements. In fiscal year 24, we awarded $20,000 in these grants benefiting both new and existing businesses such as Brooklyn Cafe and Commodore Public House and Kitchen. These grants support a maximum of $2,500 for a single facade improvement and $5,000 for a dual facade project facing a street and a street or a street and an alleyway. This is an image that shows the transformation at Commodore Public House and Kitchen, a new business to North Fourth Street. This property was vacant up until this business location. Here also I have a list of all the projects supported in fiscal year 24. And then here is a before and after image of the work to Brooklyn Cafe, which was a result of this program. Lastly, WDI launched a special initiative to enhance the Wilmington Riverwalk with holiday lighting. This was aimed at increasing downtown visitorship and the economy during our slower season, utilizing $15,000 from our Municipal Services District funding and an additional $15,000 in funds approved by WDI Board of Directors. I contracted and managed this extensive holiday lighting project in fiscal year 24. What began as a hospitality initiative to boost economic activity has evolved into a full-scale lighting program. This effort also served as the foundation for the inaugural Holidays on Water Initiative in November and December of 2024. As you can see, the bottom image shows the lighting program, the pilot program that we held in fiscal year 24. And above is the expanded initiative in partnership with the city of Wilmington and Wilmington CVB to expand this initiative in December and November, or November and December of 2025. In partnership with WDI, the city of Wilmington and the Wilmington Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Holidays on Water Initiative also featured a series of holiday-themed drone shows in fiscal year 25 along the Wilmington Riverwalk. I just show this to show what a great partnership we have with both the city and the Wilmington CVB to welcome visitors downtown over the holidays and we hope to expand and grow this program in the future years. In conclusion, fiscal year 2024 demonstrated the power of strategic investment through the MSD. From cleaning and beautification to business engagement, social services, outreach and special initiatives, WDI remains committed to enhancing the district's vitality through our contract with the city of Wilmington. Because these statistics highlight more than just numbers. They reflect real lives impacted, businesses supported and a downtown environment that continues to thrive. We appreciate the city of Wilmington's continued support and I look forward to building on our progress in the future. I welcome any questions at this time.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waddell.
I serve on the Executive Committee of WDI, so I get the opportunity to work and see Christina work closely and firsthand. And I just want to say thank you for the work that you do and the commitment that you have to the beautification and success of downtown Wilmington. It's great having you at the helm of WDI and the work that you do is, and your team does, is really pretty special. I wanted to just also shout out the Holiday Lights Program. I mean, that was one of the most successful things I think that we've seen. Do we have any, get a lot of feedback? We had a lot of feedback during the Holiday Light Program from, from, from citizens and folks that weren't in Wilmington that were emailing all of us just saying, this was incredible. Can we do it again? I know you're, you're working on that already. Do we have any idea what the economic impact of that was to downtown? Did y'all have any study of what was in the slide and I missed it? I'm sorry.
Well, we, we saw a significant increase in November, December in the visitor traffic. And I don't have those exact statistics on me at the moment, but I'd be happy to share with this council our reports on the Holiday Light Pilot Program and the, the next, next step initiative that we took last fiscal year. In hearing the impact from the business community, there was a lot of visitorship. There was a lot of people going into Front Street Brewery, into the restaurants. Modern Legend emailed me and said that she had, out of the eight years that she's been in business on North Front Street, this was the most solid December or the most revenue that she's experienced in the month of December yet. So if that doesn't speak to the, to the great work that we're doing through this initiative, I, I don't know what will. But we're, we're honestly, we are supporting businesses. Now businesses like Front Street Brewery are planning for this upcoming season. Front Street Brewery is actually planning on opening the third floor to allow folks to come in and, and have a few drinks before they get seated in the regular dining room. They just had such an influx of people in lines out the sidewalk to get in and that they think that opening the third floor will be a good move for their business.
Again, thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Thank you, Christina. Good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next presentation is, I'm going to recognize Ms. Kim Huffman, who's the President and CEO of New Hanover County Tourism and Development Authority, and Ms. Frida Brady, who's the Executive Director of the Wilmington Convention Center for an update from CVB and the Convention Center.
Thank you, Mayor Sappho and council for giving us this opportunity to come before you annually as we do and give you some great news about both the marketing, sales and as well as the results that we're seeing at the Wilmington Convention Center. And to your point, Councilwoman Waddell, we did have one of the strongest Decembers in rooms, rooms tax collection. So I don't know if that was a direct impact, but I know we did have visitors coming in. So it was a great month for us as far as that too, so. Okay, Dylan, I'm going down. So, so I wanted to start out with our room occupancy tax collections and give you an update of where we are for fiscal year 24, 25. Our Convention Center District continues to remain strong. You know, a couple of years ago, right after COVID, we saw it dip. But since then, we've seen a really good increase specifically in the Convention Center District month over month. To date, we are through January, the city of Wilmington is up 6.32% and the Convention Center District is up 4.58%. Countywide, we're actually down 3.23%, but we're seeing that not just here in our area, but pretty much nation statewide and nationwide. Calendar year 2024, our countywide collections were up slightly at 1.15% from 2023. And that, at that time was the largest collections ever. So we're still continuing to see growth and especially in the city and within the convention district. So we'll talk a little bit about our sales efforts for the fiscal year 24, 25. To date, we've had 186 leads for the year and comparing that back to last year, that's a 43% increase. Under bookings, we've had 94 bookings to date and that's a 56% increase. And we've added 140 new accounts in calendar year 2024. We continue to focus in on our target audiences, knowing that, you know, with the funds that we have, we want to be very strategic and very streamlined with what we do. So our primary target audiences for our meetings and conventions continue to be our meeting and event planners in North Carolina, the southeastern United States, DC and Chicago for meetings between 400 to 750 people. And we again looked at our target market segments. We start with our state associations, which remains our number one market. Our regional and small national associations, working with third-party meeting planners, corporate, sports, which has become a, a big part of what we're doing, as well as our smurf market, which is more our social, military, educational, religious and fraternal. Our public relations efforts again have continued to be successful as we go through. Earn media outreach efforts focused on promoting Wilmington's convention district along with the Wilmington Convention Center and its offerings. It included seven placements for the year, five print and two online, 583,000 impressions with a PR value of over $205,000. And considering that we had a PR budget of 18,000 that we invested, that's 11 to one return on investment. So we feel like our media efforts are working well and we want to continue to do those as, as strongly as we can. We submitted three responses to editorial requests for stories about the Carolinas and, or just North Carolina to the following publications. Convention South, Insurance and Financial Meetings Management Magazine and Meetings Today. And just real quickly, I'll run through just a couple of our public relations results. We were in part of the coastal catch-up in Meetings Today. One of the quotes was, "The charming coastal city of Wilmington, North Carolina sits between the Cape Fear River and the Atlantic Ocean within driving distance of three island beaches that blend the city's historic and walkable downtown with the vibes of a beach getaway." So great publicity for our entire destination. Meetings Today also included us in what they called Beach Day and talked again about Wilmington and our proximity and how our beaches are part of our destination as well. Smart Meetings, we had historic and heroic. In Convention South, we were part of the Event Planner's Guide to North Carolina. And under advertising, we continued our paid media strategy and we focused on the following. First, we were driven by print and I'll show you in just a second a couple of our examples of our print advertising that we have. We prioritized print insertions with key industry publications featuring North Carolina-specific editorial. And most of the placements we did were either full or half-page placements for maximum impact. We also reinforced this through digital. As we know, digital remains to be king in everything that we do. So we wanted even with our meetings and convention market, we want to remain viable through our digital channels. So we did ongoing paid search to reach planners, which would be searching specific keywords. We used LinkedIn, targeting users with meeting planner listing in their skills or job title. We did e-blast and newsletters and we also did trade show support through our pre-show blast. And one of the things that will be, we worked on last year and will continue to work on this year as moving forward is a new focus on corporate and also incentive planners. These are just some of our advertising placements. I'm not going to go through all these. But as you can see, we did print in such as Business, North Carolina, Connect, Convention South. Digital, we did industry newsletters, association newsletters. We did a Convention South video enhancement, LinkedIn, YouTube, you know, whatever avenues we had an opportunity to advertise in there. Under our pre-show trade e-blast, and of course, what this is, is before we go into a trade show, when we actually have people there, we do some e-blast and let them know what our booth numbers are and that type of thing to come and visit with us. So we did those for Connect, Destination Southeast, IPEC and RCMA this year. And our advertising and digital results, our top-line metrics included our targeted impressions delivered was over 527,000. Clicks to our website were 11, over 11,000. Our targeted email sends were over 220,000 and our email opens were over 43,000. And here you'll see just some samples of our advertising. This was some of our new print creative. And again, it's playing off our leisure of come and then stay. So we, an example is come to meet on the Riverfront, stay to play on the Riverwalk. So again, just not only talking about our destination as a meeting destination, but also extending the stay. And we've seen, as I've shared in the past, that many of convention attendees, when they come to our destination, they come early, they stay longer and we generally have record attendance. So again, letting them know that there's more to us than just the meeting itself. And so it's been very successful. And one of the other venues or avenues we use for marketing is we did do a meeting planner guide postcard. And this was used by the sales team at trade shows to drive planners to the website via the QR code that they, that way they could download a digital meeting planner's guide. We've seen currently that more and more of the planners prefer to have it in the digital format versus a hard copy. So we're really starting to transition to that, but yet still have something we can put in their hand that will drive them to that website or to that position to use that meeting planner guide. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Frida.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. It's great to be here this evening. So what's been going on at the Convention Center? Kim's talked to you about all the marketing efforts they, she and her team has done and they've done a great job with driving business to Wilmington. And we have our sales team here who collaborate really well in attending trade shows, going to client meetings and driving business to the Convention Center. So we were, we're having a great year. So what does this mean in terms of highlights? First, since we last met, I would like to mention or highlight, we hosted the United States President and we hosted also two international meetings that followed the president's visits. One was the Commission for Environmental, the agency that came here with the Mexican delegation, United States and Canada. with the Mexican delegation, United States and Canada. And it brought, with that particular meeting planner, international presence to Wilmington. As well, we finished the year in June with the Techno-Digital Forensic Conference, which is another international group that's now returning to Wilmington for the second time, and their attendance is close to 900 attendees. So, in looking at this year, 2025, we're looking at about 115 events. This is the most we've done since COVID, and we're continually growing. These numbers represent over 81,000 in attendance, approximately about 23,000 hotel room nights. And financially, we're performing better than budget this year. We hope to end the year with a June projection of 6.2 million. And what's driving this is our convention groups. Some of the highlights, Circle K is coming back. I believe this is their third year that they are coming back, as well as, as I mentioned, the Techno Security Digital Forensic Conference. We hosted Realtors back in September, Community Association Institute. They're now at 600 attendees. They have been with us, they were here in August of '24, they're coming back '25, and has told us this will be their last year because they have just outgrown the Convention Center. North Carolina Healthcare Engineers, they're another multi-year conference. They will come back in August of '26. So, Convention Center, Convention Groups are truly driving our, our, our high performance and revenue. Local banquets this year, Novant has brought some local events with us, as well as Wilmington Business at Journal with the Power Breakfast. Reed's came back this year with their sales conference. So, again, strong business from our local community. Holiday parties made a comeback this year. We had four corporate holiday events that significantly impacted our, our, our revenue performance. It came in after our budget, and we, too, enjoyed all the holiday decorations downtown. We decorated the building. We did over, a little over 18 military balls in the month of November. We picked up two military balls in December in addition to the holiday event. So, we're rounding out 21 military ball events. There is one tomorrow night. It's not quite the birthday celebration, it's, they call it a dining out. So, really a good November and December of this year. And of course, our public events, which engage our local community, get our residents into the building. These events continue to be successful. The Pokemon Sports Card Show will be coming back in June. The Comic-Con, I think it was, last I heard, 5,000 attendees wrapped around the building. That's a great event, as well as the Boat Show. And then the special events we get to host, and the staff really takes honor in servicing these events, Honor Flight, the salute to a veteran, of course, the military balls, and then the Azalea Festival. We get to host the boxing event as well as the Queen's Court Dance. So, we get a little excited with all those events. All right, so where do we go looking ahead? Kim's going to talk a little bit about it, but I know there are some groups, we wanted to, just you to recognize, that have outgrown the Convention Center and has told us they will not be back. One of them is North Carolina Municipalities League, League of Municipalities. Their Vision Conference is not able to come back to Wilmington because they've outgrown the Convention Center. North Carolina Parks and Recreation, Community Institute, I mentioned that earlier. That's at 600. They will not be able to come back to the Convention Center. So, just events we're starting to see to, to grow. I know we're hosting a very high-profile event in August or September of '26. My memory is the Society of, the Southern Association of Highway Safety Transportation Officials. They're looking at about 1,500 attendees. We're having to use the Wilson Center for that event. So, lots of great things going on at the Convention. We're growing, we just need more space.
Okay, and real quickly, playing off what Frida has shared and talking about the great groups and the great success that we're having. Since opening in 2010, we know that business has just grown greatly at the Convention Center. She said they're having a record year. I remember when she first went in and we came in, and we were excited that we had 10 conventions in a year. You know, we had double digits, and now look at where we are and, and everything. But as she just shared, we did, the growth of the current groups is resulting in a loss of repeat business. We're going to start losing some of that good repeat business that we've had for several years just because they, we can't accommodate them any longer in the existing space that we have. And we've also seen, of course, the growth of our airport. And with the growth of the airport, it has opened up additional flights that now we're looking at expanding our market. I know that our sales team is looking at national groups that require, though, a greater footprint than our current facilities have. So, we, both the CBB or the TDA and the Wilmington Convention Center Advisory Committee have shared a resolution with the city in support of a feasibility study on expanding the Convention Center. So, you know, as y'all are looking at future planning, you know, looking at these great numbers, you know, we know that we could do better if we had a little more space, so. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Kim and Frida, I know you folks do an outstanding job. Question, Kim, to date, as of today, how many rooms are there in the downtown area? I know that was, as the Convention Center was being built, hotels started to sprout, and more got built, you know, along the way. How many do we have currently? How many rooms?
We've got approximately around 850 to 900, you know, rooms that are available within that, you know, core district. The problem that we have with that, of course, is they're not all bookable. You know, they don't always give us the room blocks out of those rooms. So, sometime we can be looking at room blocks anywhere from 300 to 400, you know, and when we're going to need, you know, more rooms than that. Sometimes we can't even get that many, so. But, you know, the room inventory has grown, which helps greatly with being able to bring in some of the bigger ones as well. So, of course, we're still hoping for more hotel properties also in the downtown area.
And so, I, I think Frida or Kim, you were sharing with me in, with the Circle K Convention. I know that was, that's a very big one. That's a big one here in the community. How many different hotels were used for that convention?
We're up to 18, 18 hotels in order to accommodate.
So, the 18 hotels are, I'm sure, expanding a, a pretty wide net there. We're probably talking about Leland, Raisel Beach, Carolina Beach. Is, so 18?
Yeah, and we use, what we've done in, in order to help incentivize them is we run shuttle service. We, we actually, you know, provide for them motor coaches so that we can get them, you know. So, again, it's back to that incentivizing the conventions to come in. It works, and that just shows the strength of our destination. If they're willing to use 18 hotels and have to ride motor coaches to get there, they really want to come here, so.
And then Frida, in respect to the expansion, or if you, if you could have expansion of, of, of the, of the center, where would that, where would we want to spend that money or focus our attention on? Would it be rooms, a meeting rooms, ballrooms, what, what in particular?
It would be a larger exhibit hall going from 30,000 to at least 100,000 exhibit hall. And a ballroom that's currently 11,800 square feet to maybe, gosh, a 25,000 square foot ballroom. And then, because you're, the larger your ballroom, you can take that and divide it into breakout space, which both groups need more than what we can provide in terms of breakout sessions.
So, the total square footage of the convention, I don't know when we built that, I think we maxed it out at the time.
Yeah, it's 100, footprint's 109,000 square feet.
And you have 30-some thousand in exhibit, is it 30?
The 30,000 exhibit.
Is the exhibit, and you, and you're saying that you want to go up to, to 100,000?
100.
Okay, so we've got some challenges there. And are there any additional hotels that, I, I understood that maybe one or two that are, are coming out of the ground possibly?
Yeah, we're, we're still hoping, yeah.
You're still hoping?
Yeah, yeah, there's still the two, you know, that we're hoping that'll be coming there across, you know, from the Convention Center itself, which will help greatly with our work.
And I guess the other question to Kim is, I know with the amphitheater, which has become very popular also, I, I know there's competition for rooms. When you have a convention or a meeting that's taking place during a popular concert, what does that look like in respect to obtaining those rooms? Is it, is it, is it much more challenging? Or, or do the, do the hoteliers continue to block those rooms for us?
Well, I think what you're going to see with that, and we bring it to it.
Could you speak a little bit, Kim, into the mic? Thank you.
Got you, okay. I think what you, you see with that especially is the average daily rate difference. You know, when you get a convention, you're going to get a group rate. When, you know, we've heard with the concerts coming in, believe it or not, there have been room rates as high as $900 a night in downtown. So, yeah, I know. And, you know, so there is some competition. And that, you know, I think that when our hotels downtown know that, let's say, one of the, one of the big bands that I think especially drives that is that widespread panic. And so, if they know, like, they're coming, they're not going to block, give us room blocks for conventions. Because when you can get three times or more the ADR off of your individuals coming in versus your convention attendees, so then, like you said, it really starts squeezing that room block to, down to... There's sometimes we only get 25 hotel rooms in a block from our core hotels downtown, and that's tough. It's a tough sale sometimes.
Okay, interesting. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sol, I'm sorry. Ms. Andrews?
So, Kim, speaking of hotel rooms, we just had a meeting of our Subcommittee here on appointments to boards and commissions. We have a chronic opening on the Convention Center Advisory Committee for a Convention Center hotel, and we're here to beg you to please find us somebody, help us to help you. We'd really like to fill that position and, and, and get somebody from the hotel business on our advisory committee.
I'll ask, I'll be glad to ask around and see if we can maybe get some of our core hotels. I think Zach Brigman was on with the Embassy, Zach is, but, you know, yeah. And so, we'll look at, I mean, you know, because, of course, we have the Ballast, we have the Aloft, we have, and then we have the Courtyard, a couple of the other ones that are downtown. So, I will work on that and see what we can come up with for you. Thank you.
Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, the hard work that y'all do as well to, to just get the word out about Wilmington and get people to see what's so awesome about living here and coming to visit here. Couple of questions. One is in regards to the capacity of the, of the Convention Center. In the interim, I know we're, we're going to be doing a feasibility study, you know, potentially. In the interim of that, trying to retain the, you know, some of the maybe lost business that's outgrown, have we had any conversations directly with the city on, for some of these larger-scale conventions to, to collaborate with the city in the Skyline Center? Because we do have some significant breakout space on that first floor that's, you know, other than large meetings that the city has, effectively unused. Is that something that y'all have discussed?
Yes, it has been, but it, logistically, it just doesn't work for convention grids, groups to move their attendees to a space like that. The mayor invited us initially when the city was moving into the Skyline Center, and we looked at it, but it just, you know, and we took that information back to convention groups. They don't want to be inconvenienced. They want everything onsite, pretty much.
I would just say, keep it in your back pocket.
Yes, yes. Well, you know, we didn't know the Wilson Center was going to come along. I, I will say on, Kim talked about the concerts. We're seeing or hearing from convention contact, or the hotel contacts, that the, the concerts are starting to sort of flatten a little bit in terms of demand. And within the last month, I've heard from two hotels that have thanked us for our group business that they get from the Convention Center. So, I'm glad to hear that because I also, also hear the clients telling us, or meeting planners telling us, they can't come to Wilmington on a certain date because of the, the high rates. But we're, we're not hearing that right now, so that, that's a good thing.
One other question in regards to room occupancy tax revenue. And there's something I could probably find on the internet, but since I got the expert here, I'm going to have you look it up for me or maybe get it to me if you don't mind. I'd be very interested to see the total room occupancy tax revenue produced annually by New Hanover County in general, and then delineate it out by how much does the city of Wilmington bring in? How much does Town of Raisel Beach, Creary Beach, Carolina Beach? If you could get, get us that information, I'd just would love to have it. I want to, I, I think the city of Wilmington is probably punching outside of our weight class a little bit from, from room occupancy, occupancy tax revenue. If it's even more possible for you to do, to break down, or if you have it at your fingertips, to break down what, with the city of Wilmington specifically, what percentage of that is Airbnb, STR versus hotel? Just interesting data to have.
I get that monthly. I'll add you to my monthly list. I'll be glad to.
Well, good. Thank you so much.
I send it out monthly to several of our partners, and so I'll be glad to add any of you that'd like to see that. It is, it is interesting, and the way we can break it down, of course, we have it month by month. We have it by all the different municipalities, even, we even have the unincorporated area. You can even find out what's there. And then we also break it out, and of course, the mayor's on my boards, that he sees that. But we also break it out hotels, motels and ends, and then we have the, what we call the vacation, other accommodations, which includes vacation rentals, Airbnbs, and all those. So, I'll be glad to add you to that.
Thank you so much. I guess I could have just asked the mayor for it.
Mayor Proten?
Um, thank, thank you for your presentation. When, when you mentioned, like, hotels jack up their rates, is there, is there some kind of, and maybe this is for our legal defense, is there some kind of law that prevents that? Or they could just, anytime they choose to jump it up?
Price is a function of demand.
I was going to say the only law would be the law of supply and demand.
Yeah. If you look on the, it, it's funny. I think if you look on the back of a hotel door, if you've ever looked at those little signs, and you'll see this, like, just astronomical price on there. I think they can't go above that price. That is like their highest published price, and it's like ridiculous, you know. And I always wondered why it was there, and they said, well, that way it gives them that leeway to be able to come in and raise those rates up to a certain level, so. And we don't set those. They have their, you know, like you said legally, they can, the demand, and they can set those prices.
Mr. Spears?
I just want to thank you both for your hard work. Lot of business going on. We, we're doing good, and, and I think that, well, I can't speak for everyone, but I think it's probably a feasible idea to grow the Convention Center. You know, as we travel around, we, we, we understand that the Convention Center is pretty much center of what's going to come to a community. So, it's, for us to be so prosperous, it, it is probably a good idea. And I also want to warn you that any time you send Luke something, you automatically subscribe to his newsletter, so be careful.
That's okay.
Thank you for all your hard work. You know, 15 years ago, when this was a huge debate in this community, whether we should build this or not, the consultants, the folks that really looked at this, the Convention Center Committee that evaluated this, said exactly what would happen, and it's come to fruition. And here we are talking about adding an additional 100,000 square feet because of the demand. And I just think that speaks volumes of what the CBB's been able to do, also what your group has been able to do, Frida. You've done an outstanding job there, and just, uh, just can't thank you enough. And hopefully, we'll get this feasibility study done, and then we'll really start looking at ways to expand this facility for this community because it is bringing a lot of folks to the community that are spending a lot of money, that are helping to offset a lot of the cost of delivering services that we have to do up here, but also the small businesses that it supports because this was created to really help a lot of the small businesses in the community when people come to our area. And the investments that the community and the city has made over the years with the Riverwalk, with the amphitheater, with the streetscapes, and all the other things that we have done over the years to enhance and, and make downtown a, a friendly environment, but also a, a place that people want to visit and come to. So, thank you for all your hard work. Means a lot to us.
Thank you. If I can leave you with this, two weeks ago, we hosted the U.S. Society of Hydrographic Society. They've been trying to come to Wilmington for several years. They met, they enjoyed it, and they're now looking at Wilmington to meet every two years.
Wow, so thank you.
I just want to say thank y'all. We just really appreciate the support we get from each of you throughout the year and support of tourism in our community, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Our next item of business is our Consent agenda items, one through four. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of this council?
Can I pull C4?
C4 is pulled. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, one through three, excluding C4 by Mayor Proten Barnett, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion, y'all in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item passes unanimously. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Kevin Spears. Mr. Spears?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony, I guess it's you, I need to ask this. So, they're looking to move from 16 to nine, 14 to nine?
14 to nine, I believe.
So, is it currently, are, are all 14 seats not filled now?
I would have to rely on Chance Dunbar to answer that specific question.
Yeah, let me just get the backstory on, on this and where it came from.
Great question, Councilman Spears. To answer your question first, I believe right now it's a 14-member committee. We have had two recent resignations, so currently at 12. And this committee's been a challenge to keep quorum once a month, I think, based upon the dynamics of whom these committee members are and what they do downtown. You know, they own and run restaurants, they own hotels. know, they own and run restaurants, they own hotels, you know, they own large property, you know, getting them in here once a month for hour, hour and a half is a challenge. So I think, from what I understood, council, back in the fall, council's appointments committee, having some challenges filling 14 seats, and at the same time, we're having challenges keeping quorum, and at the same time, could just look at it as an opportunity to consolidate some of these positions. Instead of having a specific restaurant owner or specific, you know, nightlife representation, we consolidated some of those singular representations into a either or, just to assist the process, help with quorum, and also continue to have a good community representation for the MST Committee.
Now, has this been, idea been presented to current members as they are now?
Correct. They didn't take action on it, but they are aware of the council's appointments committee's recommendation. They are aware of it slimming down from 14 down to nine, and I believe we timed this for a July 1 start, and at that time, there is a natural expiration of, I think, most of the committee members that we may be losing that haven't already resigned, and with the two vacant seats, are naturally rolling off July 1 of this year.
And they show no interest of wanting to remain on this committee?
We'll have to look at it. I think, I think, we presented this originally to council's appointments committee back in the fall. Some positions have changed, some representations have changed. I think we'll have to look at where any vacancies might still lay with the nine member come July 1, and just poll some of those committee members. I think we'll have some requests to stay on, to fill the nine, not to continue on with the above nine.
Okay. Mr. Dunbar?
Took it, this was not something knee-jerk. Meredith and the attorney's office, along with the city clerk, very deliberate in looking at ways to combine the various descriptive or descriptions of people that serve, and it was just, they were so specific, sometimes it was very difficult. We'd sit here, you know, meeting after meeting, trying to find somebody to fill certain ones, so the nine that we're gonna have left is a very comprehensive group, and it covers, you know, it's a wide range of people, so it's gonna operate better, and they'll be more apt to have a quorum, and so, there you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Chance.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Spears, seconded by Councilmember Andrews. For the discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information segment. We have two speakers that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. The sitting clerk will keep the time. When you hear the buzzer go off, your time is up. Our first speaker is Ms. Cheyenne Dos Santos, who will be speaking to us about New Hanover County Schools DEI Removal Campaign. Is Ms. Santos here? Santos? Okay. Next speaker is Mr. Simon Dart, who'll be speaking to us about New Hanover Needs Stretchers. Mr. Dart, welcome.
First, I want to thank all of you for your time tonight. I know that it's late, and thank you for being here. My name is Simon Dart. I represent Arrive. We're an EMS company here in North Carolina. First and foremost, I do want to thank you all for serving this county. It's not easy. You have to make a lot of difficult decisions, and very rarely do you get to please everyone, and I think that's pretty much everything in business. I acknowledge this, and I want to thank you for building this beautiful city. They talked about how clean downtown is. I come from Virginia Beach, and it's gorgeous here, so keep up the good work with that. But why am I standing here before you this evening? It's for a very important reason. New Hanover needs more stretcher service. As it stands, New Hanover County is vastly underserviced, and is in need of non-emergency medical transport providers. Many family members, caretakers, and facilities, rehab centers, and others, find themselves helpless and unable to provide for their elderly and disabled loved ones. They need transportation to get to medical appointments, as well as just to live their daily lives, just going to anything, weddings, funerals, you name it. If you're in a stretcher, you're at the mercy of Vitalink, and they are unable to compete right now. They are unable to fulfill the ride requests that are needed in this area. Arrive is fully licensed as an EMS company in North Carolina, and we are ready to help with this. Our business model is simple. We charge facilities and those who can pay a fair price. We then offer subsidized and free rides to those in true need with nowhere else to go. In 2024, which is the year we launched here, Arrive provided hundreds of free rides and subsidized wheelchair and stretcher for anyone that needed it. Out of our own pockets, we gave over $20,000 worth of free rides, and if you'd like to ask anyone from Life Care, Amedisys, any hospice company here, as well as any elderly care facility, as well as the public, we can give you testimony after testimony of how we've tried to help people that have no other choice. In 2025, our goal is simple. We want to do more, so we want to offer, we want to get to $100,000 worth of free rides or more in this area, and we're not asking for anything from y'all. We are simply asking for the opportunity to compete. So please allow Arrive Transportation to provide stretcher service to facilities, elderly, disabled, and those in need. Help us, help others. At this time, I would like to give the rest of my time back, if y'all have any questions.
I have a question. Mr. Dart, this is interesting. Vitalink, they're the ambulance service for the community here?
Yes, sir. So Novant and Vitalink are the same thing. It is simply the transport division of Novant.
Well, interesting that you're here before us this evening, because I had a relative that needed an ambulance, and when we called for an ambulance, there was no ambulances.
Yes, sir.
So I saw it firsthand. So how far are we short?
Very far. We have petitions signed by almost every single elderly care facility and rehab center in all of New Hanover, stating that they have suffered either financial loss, or potential or injury to people within their facilities, because Vitalink cannot handle the demand. And if I may expound on this, in New Hanover, for a stretcher to be completed, it must be done by Vitalink, meaning if point A and point B are within New Hanover County, only Vitalink is allowed to do that. And we mentioned earlier the law of supply and demand. Well, they've created demand, because y'all know, we've had a huge influx of people moving here. 240,000 residents, 20% over the age of 65, 12% of total residents are disabled. So we need, we need help. They need help, and we're not asking for anything except to just be able to operate. We are both for-profit, and we have a nonprofit side which facilitates end-of-life wishes. So, a very, thing we run into a lot is, we will get calls from places like Amedisys or Life Care, which y'all know, and they'll say, hey, someone is dying in a facility, and we can't get a stretcher ride, but their family can't get to them because their family is either unable to transport themselves or sick. This person's actively dying, and they are going to die in that hospital bed alone if we can't get them out of there. Can you help us? And if it's in New Hanover, we can't help. We have done this many times in Brunswick, where we are allowed to work. We will actually go pick those people up, and I swear on this, we recently did this, got a lady to her loved ones, and one hour later, got a call that she died surrounded by those she loved. This woman would have died in a hospital bed alone. So this is why I stand here today. We're very passionate about it. I have aging parents who also struggled to get transportation, and that's why I'm so passionate about this. Are there any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Waddell.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Waddell. This is interesting. First, I've heard of your business, and didn't even know it existed, but have you, have you presented this to New Hanover County Commissioners yet, or City Council the first stop?
We have followed the proper chain. So for the past eight months, I have been speaking to Mrs. Wurzbocker, as well as everyone in the proper divisions, giving them the petitions, showing them the data, and at this point, they don't even respond to my emails.
Well, I guess my question is, have you, have you gone to do the, to a public comment like you've done here today at the, at the county commissioners?
Good question. That is actually my next step after this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Joiner?
My question for you is, what is the mechanism that makes it exclusive to Novant? You said that you can operate in Brunswick, but not here. Is that contractual? Is that a general statute? What would need to change? What's your actual request for whatever body has the authority to do it to change?
That's a good question. So here in New Hanover County, City Council itself has to vote to approve for a new license for EMS, and currently, this is what we've gotten from your attorneys, we did contact them to ask about this, and currently, they are claiming that Vitalink, when they purchased the local hospital system, which Vitalink is Novant, that they somehow got the exclusive rights to all stretcher services within New Hanover. Now, within the contract, we can't really find where it talks about them having exclusive rights to stretcher services. Obviously, they get rights to hospital services, and we don't debate that. We're not a hospital system at all. We don't want to be. We want to solve the transportation issue. Did that answer the question for you?
So you think what you've identified is potentially a contractual issue with Novant?
Possibly, though we've had our attorney speak with them, and we really can't find anywhere where they have the rights to stretcher.
Okay. So I think important point of clarification, the city of Wilmington, A, does not have a health department. The county does. That's a function of state government in North Carolina. And then, the second point is that Novant and the sale of the hospital all happened with New Hanover County, not with the city of Wilmington. So you've, you've caught our attention, and we're interested in helping you figure out what you need to do to be heard by the right group, and to work on this issue. I think we might need to tweak who exactly you're directing some of these concerns to. So our attorney, Ms. Everhart, is sitting over there, and maybe didn't contact our attorney's office. Okay, so we've got your name and information now.
Perfect.
And I think somebody from up here will probably follow up with you, make sure that you're heading in the right direction.
And David, thank you for that clarification. It has been difficult, kind of tracking down exactly how we're supposed to be doing this, as it does vary from county to county. So for instance, Brunswick County was a vastly different process to get approved in this, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Dunbar?
David asked what I was gonna ask, but you did mention that the city needs to give you permission?
That is correct.
And now you know that we don't.
I appreciate that. I'm just going off of what we, when we asked Lisa Wurzbocker, and then she brought in the attorney that they have, it was made very clear to us that we would need the city to sign off on it, and when we reached out to North Carolina EMS, they also said we had to have city council sign off. But if I'm wrong, I'm thrilled.
Okay, just stay right there. Meredith, we don't do that.
I'm not aware of anything that we would have to do with a contract that would involve EMS.
Would you?
I'd be glad to speak with the county attorney.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you could call Lisa and or the county attorney and just say what this gentleman has told us, and clear the air, and then get him in touch with those folks. I assure you, when you go before the county commissioners, they'll sit up and take notice.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much. And, like I said, we are trying our best to get this sorted out, but we have been speaking with individuals in the administration for eight months now, and we have had attorneys speak to them, and it has all been very convoluted, and we really haven't gotten many straight answers. So we're trying to go off of what we've been given.
The only thing, the only thing that I could think of is that maybe they're referring to the fact that if this is considered some type of hired vehicle, that we would have to issue permits that way for the number of vehicles for hire that are allowed to operate within the city. That's the only thing that I could think of, that Mr. Smith may have been talking about when he was speaking with them. So I'll contact him and see. We probably do have a certain number of limits on the, on the number of particular types of vehicles, but I'll have to check on that. But that may be what he meant. We've not had this conversation before, so I will check with him tomorrow.
Mayor Protem.
One quick question, from my knowledge. Where are you located? Like, where's your business? Is it in your yard? Where?
I appreciate that. So being a transportation company, we simply rent space down on Medical Center Drive, where we have all of our vehicles, as well as our EMTs meet. At that point, they go and facilitate. Our headquarters is here in Wilmington, but we have no need for people to come to us. We did recently pass all the inspections for Medicaid, for instance, so we are fully licensed and running here, and we meet all specifications required.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next item of business are public hearings. Item PH1 is a resolution approving the second amendment to the amended and restated purchase and development agreement for the River Place development, and authorize the city manager to sell property to the developer at fair market value. At this time, I'd like to recognize city manager, Mr. Cottle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. Aubrey Parsley, our economic development director, will overview this item for us.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. We have a lengthy title for a resolution up here for you tonight. My presentation will be providing a little context and color as to what we hope to accomplish with this resolution. I just have a few visuals here just to serve as a frame of reference for, for my talking points here. So as council's aware, the city has been working on a number of different strategies as it relates to city-owned real estate. Two such initiatives, which serve as context specific to this River Place item tonight, is that first, we want to, of course, simplify the city's real estate holdings, and we're looking to primarily do that through dispositions, and then another initiative that we have is to prioritize activity which yield cash proceeds for the city. And one prospect that we had looked at for accomplishing these goals was identified last year in River Place, more specifically, exploring the sale of a ground lease that the city has with East West Partners, located at 202 North Water Street, more commonly known as River Place. There is about 34,000 square feet of land owned by the city that East West leases from the city at a rental fee of about $57,000 a year now. It's a long-term lease, has about 43 years in duration still on it. Selling the property and the ground lease that goes with it would allow the city to bring forward a significant portion of the benefit of that lease in cash today, and it would also simplify, to some extent, the public-private partnership that we have with East West. That harkens back to the two initiatives I mentioned earlier. To vet this as a prospect, staff did obtain a third-party appraisal back in October, and to determine the market value of that ground lease area and the lease that goes with it, the appraisal came back with a market rate value of 1.2 million. The concept of a sale was then communicated to East West, who expressed an interest in buying out the ground lease at the market rate in November. So the grievance which govern River Place and the public-private partnership are complex, as is evidenced by the length of the title tonight. So council's authorization was sought prior to discussing the potential for this sale beyond the concept stage. An item came before council at the January 21 meeting of this year, and the formal resolution to authorize the city manager to negotiate with East West for a sale under the PPP. With council's approval of that resolution, negotiations between the parties have progressed, but the core concept for the transaction remains intact, which is the city seeks to sell the ground lease to East West Partners for a, at a market rate under the umbrella of the public-private partnership agreement that exists today, and still governs the property at large. The resolution on tonight's agenda would, if approved, have council authorize an amendment to the purchase and development agreement, which would enable the city manager to then sell this ground lease that we're contemplating here, and that I show here now on the slide. Again, it's a subset of the city-owned land within the public-private partnership. Note that the city and East West Partners would still have shared responsibilities at the facility, should council approve the amendment, and should a subsequent transaction occur for the sale of the ground lease. The city would remain the owner of certain other portions of the facility as well. For example, in the upper-left-hand corner of the slide, that white area there is the parking deck that the city would still own and operate. That's, again, under the umbrella of this public-private partnership. So with that, I'll conclude my comments and ask if there's any questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Waddell.
Would we anticipate using, Mr. Parsley, would we anticipate using the 1.2 million dollars, once it was received, those proceeds, to buy down the variable rate debt?
Yes, that is correct. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH1. Saying none, Madam Clerk, have you received any additional comments?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Any further comments? Any further comments from the city council? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of the council. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Waddell, second by Councilmember Joiner. Further discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item, which is an item PH2, which is an ordinance amending the Land Development Code, Chapter 18, to provide a height expectation, exception for hospitals. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian Chambers, our assistant planning director, will overview this item for us.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. The proposed amendment would restore the height amendment that was previously available for hospitals under the Legacy Land Development Code. The Legacy Code included a height exception for hospitals, schools, and religious institutions. It was put in place in 2005, allowed for a maximum height of 150 feet for these uses and applied to all districts in which these uses were located. Since 2005, only the New Hanover Regional on 17th Street utilized the site exception. Our current code does not have a height exception for specific uses. Height is established uniformly across districts. Hospitals are only permitted in the ONI district with conditions. The maximum height in the ONI district is 96 feet with step backs, and there is a prescribed condition for hospitals that require all buildings to be set back 100 feet from property lines. This is the proposed text for the amendment. Hospitals where permitted in any district may be erected at a height not to exceed 150, and it also requires that all prescribed conditions and step-back provisions be applied. This amendment would restore the 150-foot height exception to allow future expansion of the hospital to utilize this allowance. All prescribed conditions and step-back provision would still apply. Staff's lease proposal is consistent with our comp plan and recommends approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you got.
Any questions? Sir, Mayor Protem?
Did the hospital bring this up, or did we just find it?
Representative from the hospital design team met with staff and the manager's office to discuss this provision.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH2, if they'll come forward and state their name for the record. Seeing none, are there any further comments from the city clerk? Have you received any additional comments?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council in respect to item PH2, and I will note that whoever makes the motion must read a consistent statement for the record.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan, based on the application material and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report. And to find approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed amendment would restore the height exception for hospitals, allowing future expansion to continue to utilize the height allowance that was available under the Legacy Code.
Okay. Very good. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Joiner. Further discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. This concludes the regular agenda, but there is one thing that I do want to bring forward. I know that me and Deputy Manager Moton have been talking about this because we've had some folks that have been coming to us about this commemoration for the 250th year of this country's birth, and I'm gonna just read it. It's across the country, cities, towns, counties, and states are commemorating the American Revolution with historical markers, plaques, and special event series. North Carolina was one of the 13 colonies of Wilmington. Historical significance of the American Revolution has been documented by many, and the North Carolina Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution requested permission to install a 250th marker on the River Walk. The request was denied by council's naming facilities committee. As an avenue to celebrate and commemorate Wilmington's role in the American Revolution, I would like to encourage the naming facilities committee to work with staff to explore an appropriate way to commemorate this history with the possible commissioning of artwork on the River Walk, if at all possible. Staff will facilitate work with stakeholders such as the Daughters of the American Revolution, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, our Commission on African-American History, which was asked by the DAR to provide a letter of support, Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as Wilmington Downtown Incorporated. Again, I recommend that the naming facilities committee members work with staff and stakeholders, propose an appropriate commemorative artwork with a budget of 25,000, if that's okay. So I'm just gonna, we've been asked to do it, so I want to push it back, ask you guys to take a look at it.
Okay.
It's a big, big thing that's coming up, and we've just been getting into it. Tom, did you have anything you want to say about it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 2026 marks the 250th anniversary, and so there's interest in recognizing and celebrating Wilmington's history and pivotal role within the American Revolution. Again, we think it would be beneficial to get guidance from members of council as to what you desire. If you recall, council adopted a policy that prohibits private entities to install any works of arts or anything of that, or arcs of, works of art of remembrance on city property. So this would be a way to do so that would be consistent with your policy.
Okay. Questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Attorney, anything further? Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk? Mr. Joiner? Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, I did just want to say congratulations to Senator Michael Lee on being elected Majority Leader of the North Carolina Senate today. It's big for our region, big for Wilmington, and I think great for the state of North Carolina as a whole. So just congratulations to him, and also Happy Azalea Festival Week.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, with the Azalea Festival, I think the neat thing about that is how everybody just starts liking each other, you know? And everybody just, like, have a good time. So I would encourage us to continue to do that, not just this weekend, but the weekends that follow.
Mr. Reimberg?
Yes, the leadership Wilmington class, every year they come before us, and I keep saying, well, there can't be that many more great people out there like we get every year, but this year proved me wrong again. So, thank you, and somebody out there, throw your hat in the ring, do something, okay?
Ms. Andrews?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to bring forward a resolution in support of the preservation of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds.
Okay. Let's, let me go to Mr. Spears, and then I'm gonna come right back to you, so we'll go to that for comments.
Yes, sir. I had the great opportunity, well, maybe not a great opportunity, honorable opportunity to honor a great man that the city of Wilmington lost last week, Mr. Hollis Briggs. He actually had about five, six, seven names, but I'm just calling him Hollis Briggs or Hollis Briggs Jr. And I had the pleasure to talk to Hollis before he passed, and he sounded in really good spirits and really optimistic, and didn't expect to lose him so soon. But the city of Wilmington took a great loss, but he really went out in style, and I tell you what, the ability to plan your own home-going service is amazing. So kudos to you, Mr. Briggs. You'll truly be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very well said, Ms. Spears. I had an opportunity to attend the service, and Mr. Joiner was there, and I know you were there, and it was outstanding, and Hollis was a true public servant, to say the least. Serves on many boards and committees and really cared about this, this community and this city, and really was the person that spearheaded the Martin Luther King Day celebration in our community, and has taken it to another level, and I know hopefully that will continue on as a legacy, not only to Dr. King, but also to him for what he's done for our community. So a great loss for our city, for sure. So with that, I'm gonna ask if the rules can be suspended so that we can vote on this particular item. This is also an item that we talked about with our delegation in Washington, and Ms. Andrews, I'm gonna turn it over to you because I know this has some significant ramifications for, for every community throughout this country, but in particular, our community too, so.
This first came up when we were in Washington, and I was in my Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee of the National League of Cities, which is our industry group, lobbying group in Washington, and they had concerns that, you know, that there were some threats to the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds, and so I'm just, all the information's in the resolution, so if I may just read it.
Let's do this real quick because I'm looking at the city clerk, and she keeps me on point here, so I'm gonna ask for the rules to be suspended so we can vote on the resolution that Ms. Andrews has brought forward. So I'll make the motion that we suspend the rules, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. The rules have been suspended. Ms. Andrews, continue, please.
Okay. Resolution declaring support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. Whereas the tax-exempt municipal bond market is a widely-used source of capital for states, local governments, tribes, territories, and nonprofit borrowers that finances a tremendous share of the nation's public infrastructure, and whereas state and local governments finance roughly three-quarters of public infrastructure in the United States and use tax-exempt bonds to do so, and whereas federal tax exemption for municipal bonds dating back to the 1800s and incorporated into the modern tax code in 1913 has been critical, excuse me, has been crucial for state and local governments, including the city of Wilmington, to affordably finance critical infrastructure projects, and whereas tax-exempt bonds offer borrowers to achieve a multiplier effect of 2.11, meaning that for every dollar, borrowers achieve $2.11 in borrowing costs savings, thereby demonstrating the efficiency and effectiveness of this exemption in facilitating infrastructure investment, and whereas since 2015, state and local governments in North Carolina have invested $52.3 billion in projects financed by tax-exempt municipal bonds, saving North Carolina taxpayers an estimated $1.1 billion. And whereas in North Carolina's 7th congressional district alone, taxpayers have saved an estimated $90.59 million on projects financed with tax-exempt municipal bonds since 2001, and whereas tax-exempt bonds provide for essential infrastructure projects such as roads, bridges, utilities, broadband, water and sewer systems, and hospitals, which are vital to the health and well-being of our community, such that without such bonds, the cost of borrowing would be more expensive, thereby causing an increase in taxes and fees that would place an undue burden on taxpayers. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wilmington City Council hereby encourages the North Carolina Congressional delegation to assist the city of Wilmington by preserving the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds by supporting and ensuring the protection of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be furnished to members of the North Carolina Congressional delegation.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously.
And Mr. Mayor, if I will, I apologize, we do have a closed session at the appropriate time.
And I was about to go into it. Thank you very much. So we have, is there a motion to enter to a closed session pursuant to the provisions of General Statute 143-318.11A3 and A6, in order for the city council to, one, consult with and provide instruction to the city attorney regarding potential legal claims, and, two, discuss a personnel matter. I will also note that the closed session will be held in council chambers. Everyone will be asked to leave the chambers at this time, and at the end of the closed session, council will reopen its public session from this room. So we have a motion to approve by Councilman Reimberg, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. We will now go into closed session, and we'll give staff time to set it up. Okay. Thank you, everybody.